Mr. Connor, if you would stand.
Bless your prayer. Lord, we come before you tonight acknowledging that you are God, that we are reliant on you. We ask you to be with our county. Thank you for protecting us. Thank you for watching over us. For the many blessings that we share, we thank you. We ask you to be with us in this meeting. May we consider what's good for our county and good for our people. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Orville. Thank you, Mr. Connor. Jim will be absent this evening. He's to join his grandkids. And Mr. Scott will be a few minutes late. He's coaching ball practice, I believe. If you would, Angie, go ahead and do your roll call.
Connor?
Here.
Hicks?
Orville?
Here.
Pulling?
Here.
Lemming?
Here.
Here. So we do have a call. In front of you this evening, or via electronic, you should have received the regular session minutes from February the 16th, 2022. Are there any corrections or errors that need to be made in the minutes? If there are no corrections, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion. We have 30 minutes.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Lemming to approve the regular session minutes from February the 16th, 2022. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The minutes are approved. Next item to see, the force this evening will be the obiter's report. Again, you should have received Mr. McCord's notes via electronic form. Is there anything you'd like to add or note, Angie?
No.
He, Mr. McCord did respond to Mr. Lemming's question about the health insurance fund. Last meeting. Do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I, hopefully everybody got a chance to read that. Just basically saying that there was no maximum. He checked with our carrier, checked with the state. We were going to look at stop losses to see if there was a number there we could come up with just to kind of entertain opportunities. But right now, we got the answer. I'm looking for it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Tonight, the force this evening, item A under new business, consideration of request for a tax abatement. Your Choice Digital, the declaration, declaratory resolution.
Hello, council. It's good to be with you tonight. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Charity Bailey, the executive director at the Grant County Economic Growth Council. So what I'm presenting with you to you tonight is, you should have received a packet regarding Your Choice Digital. It's a Bitcoin mining facility on 100 North in Marion. It's a $122 million project over five years. We are requesting a five-year phased tax abatement for this project. I just handed out a sheet that kind of highlighted some of the, some of the things about this project that I thought would interest you. They are creating new jobs. There's 30 positions, 30 employees at a $45 an hour pay rate. They are building new, but for this particular project, we're not talking about specifically a building as, as it is going to be containers on land. That's all going to be movable, if need be. And they, one thing that I highlighted on here, but I'll let the company speak to it as well as far as community partnership. The Growth Council is willing to help with home purchases through our Grant for Grads program, which provides money for closing costs. As a company, they are going to ask that employees do consider relocating and living in Grant County. So I did want to highlight that as well. And you should have in your packet kind of some, some pictures or drawings of what this facility will look like. So that's all that I wanted to say about this, but there, there are people from the company. Lawrence, Sam Boland is here, and he can answer any specific questions that you might have regarding Bitcoin, anything related to the project. Yes.
Charity, can you answer for me briefly and simply to a person who does not understand?
I know what you're gonna-
What the term Bitcoin mining? It sounds like you're digging the ground and dig something up.
Yes.
But I know that's not it. My grandchildren have told me that.
That's correct. It's a, it's a complex process that relies on servers that creates, this is what I, this is what I have written down. So it's my extent of knowledge. It creates a ledger validating authenticity of transactions. So it all, it's all done on computers through servers. And Lawrence, maybe you want to explain that a little bit better as well.
There is no product.
No. It's just, it's just currency, right?
It's a, it's a visual currency.
Digital currency. So it's not like manufacturing anything. You're not, there's not going to be something tangible that you have in your hand as a result of the process. It's just digital currency. Yep, I feel, I feel the same way. It's hard, very hard to understand for me too, but there are some people here in the room that can help explain that. Anything else for me?
Quick, on your paper, you said, verbally, you said five years. On your paper, it says three.
Sorry, it is three, three years based.
And is the state already approved part of this?
The state, in the package, there was an incentive from the state. So the state is aware of the project, yeah.
How much power does it use?
That's a great question. Do you know the power usage?
Yeah, available power at the Dugald Station is 20 megawatts now, with the opportunity to ramp up and build that station out later, as needed.
This is Lawrence Boland from Your Choice Digital. Any additional questions?
Is there a plan for the power?
Sir?
Is there a plan to get the power here?
Yeah, at the Dugald Station now, Island County Road 100, there is available 20 megawatts now that is not being used. Your Choice is, goal is to take all 20 megawatts now to operate the entire facility. Those 20 megawatts that we're taking is not taken away from other users of the station. That's the available capacity minus anyone else's usage of that station. Our goal and our hope is to build out to 90 to 120 megawatts with our investment to help facilitate that at the Dugald Station, to build that out so we can actually put more data mining pods there so we can build it out more and hire more people, pay more wages. Would you like me to explain what Bitcoin mining is?
Yeah, if you just want to go ahead and just give us a brief overview of that.
Sure. Be happy to. Well, what Bitcoin mining, Bitcoin mining is, it's a, it's a digital currency. It's an exchange of digital currency. Give an example. A new transaction is entered out in the mining world. The transaction is then submitted or transmitted to a network of mining computers. Those mining computers communicate peer-to-peer. And this is not just in Indiana, the United States, it's globally. So this is a true global currency. Those computers then solve complicated mathematical equations. And what those equations do is that it validates that transaction is legitimate, that it's an actual transaction. Once it's confirmed to be a legitimate transaction, they are clustered together on what's called blocks. So you've heard, have you heard the expression of blockchain? Anyone heard that? Okay. What a blockchain is, a blockchain is a way to collect that transaction, to secure it. It cannot be altered. Once it is in the blockchain, it's 100% security, can't be tampered with, altered. And so once these blockchains are together, we have a history of that transaction forever that completes the transaction. The reason why Bitcoin mining is, is in crypto mining in general is a little bit misunderstood, is because the power and the computer, computing systems that are needed, you have to have multiple computing, what they call NOTS, that are actually going out and they're trying to find these transactions online. And they're solving the mathematical equation to validate it. So it's like, if you go to pay with a credit card, they're going to ask to see your driver's license. That validates that's your name on the credit card. It's the same system here. It just simplifies the transaction, makes it legal. The actual blockchain, when someone requests a transaction, the, the transaction is broadcast from P2P networks or mining networks. And it's all computers. These are all computers. They're called nodes. Now, the network nodes, again, validates that transaction, make sure it's legitimate. And once it's legitimate, then that, that currency goes into the block, the blockchain secures it so it can't be altered. The only time that that would ever go out is if you wanted to sell that, that particular transaction, again, out on the market. So this, this is incredibly safe. There are multiple safe points, fail-safe points in there. There are multiple safeguards built into the system. But I mean, Bitcoin is not something you can physically touch. It's like you're doing a wire transfer. Apple Pay, it's not an act, you don't actually have an Apple Pay. You just go in there and hit this transactions concluded. It's very similar, but on a much more complicated technical system. But once that transaction is verified, it's combined with another transaction creates the blockchain. The blockchain is the most secure system that you can possibly ever have for any type of transaction, be it cryptocurrency, medical records, family history, anything like that. They're going to use a blockchain system so that it can't be corrupted and can only be entered into from the person who owns that block. I hope that helps a little bit.
Right, question? Is it actual Bitcoin, or is there would be like Ethereum or some of the other ones?
There is. I mean, you've seen like the Bitcoin symbol, it's the B with a money.
Yeah.
Bitcoin is not, has no physical form. It is a 100% digital currency. Now, if you go to someone, you say, I want to buy a Bitcoin, they may give you a coin saying that's worth whatever. But there is no, there is technically no physical Bitcoin. It's all done wire-to-wire through a blockchain transaction.
I did want to say, I mean, part of the reason that I thought this was a great project to bring to you all was because it was a different industry. This is something unusual. It's, it's forward-thinking, and it's going to bring in a different type of industry and jobs as far as IT, the maintenance of the, of the servers and all that goes along with that, I think is a really, a really good thing for, for Grant County to consider.
I think it'd be interesting, since we had met, Charity, just kind of give them an idea of the state's backing of it already before we get to it so that we all understand it. A couple of things, I guess, to just ask you questions. You're talking about tracking on IP addresses and using like, you call it blockchain, but you could do things through Coinbase Global and all those different transactions. Is that correct?
Well, this, this mining is specific to Bitcoin. It will not bring into account other cryptocurrencies.
Okay.
This is 100% specific to Bitcoin.
Isn't there only a limited number of those available?
21 million.
So we're not to that number yet?
No, we're not, we're not to that number. The, the, the reason why they got to 21 million and when it was created is a mystery. No one knows why it's only 21 million. But because of its limited number of capacity, that is what causes the, the pricing, the value spike, because it has, it's a limited commodity.
Supply and demand.
Supply and demand, 100%.
There's nothing else that backs it techni-
Exactly, exactly.
And once you max out the substation, you're saying you've already got an agreement in place to increase that for your, your business and our local area?
Yes. We have, we've developed a very good relationship with AEP. Is it AEP? AEP, sorry, Indiana-Meska, I know, but AEP. To build that out, we have a great relationship with Ashley Savio, who is one of the directors over there for this project. We understand that that's going to be an investment on our part, and we're willing to do it, to build that, build out that side and build out that service. Because realistically, the more mining systems you have, the more nodes that you have operational, it, you, you increase your chance of being able to acquire that transaction. So if we have multiple servers running, that means that gives us an opportunity to acquire those transactions that would be put out there. To give an example, we have, our pods is what I call them. If you've seen like the, it's basically a modified shipping container. It's 20 feet by, seven feet wide by eight feet high. It is just servers. That's all it is. Each one will contain 168 on an average, 168 servers within each one of these trailers. They will run 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They will not shut off. However, we do have a contingency built in that if there is ever a power interruption somewhere in town and you need to take some power, we can power these down to make that additional electricity available wherever it's needed. That is one of the reasons why we want to build out that side as well. So not only will it accommodate our growth, but it'll also accommodate additional growth if, if it's needed in the area.
I don't know if everybody's aware, you actually have a packet on the back. It kind of gives you that picture of what he's talking about. I, I'll just be honest, I'm not in favor of tax abatement. And I, Charity and I have had this conversation. I do think it's an interesting, very interesting concept of, of business. I'd like to know how you plan on keeping 30 employees busy though, if this is mostly done by computer.
Because those servers will need to be monitored. If you think about it, there are 40, there will be at the beginning stage, 40 of these pods, and each pod will contain 168 servers per pod. That's-
Say that again.
There'll be 40 pods, or what they call nodes. And inside of each one, there are 168 servers within each one of these. We'll have 40 of these, I call them shipping containers. There'll be 168 servers. The reason why we will have those people there, they will monitor if there's a lag, there's a slowdown. They have a system where if we get, it'll say pod five, server nine. They can go and take that out, put in a new pod, and then service that, service that, that server again. So it will be manned 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There, there will not be a time when we don't have staff on site.
But that's almost one person for every pod, correct?
Well, we at, if you look at the-
It'll be up to-
Yeah, it'll be up to 30 by the end of 2025. We'll have 30.
So it's a ramp up?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Did you want to comment just a little bit about the partnerships with the state here?
I think the state is only giving sales tax.
Sales tax.
Yeah, and then AEP is, is giving a credit. But other than that, I don't think there are any other incentives.
The AEP credit is basically an economic rider to help with our energy costs. It's minimal, but, and then the state is, is, as Charity said, is basically a sales tax credit.
Sir, we only have 21 million of these. How many have you built?
Sir?
How many have you built already?
Well, there are 21 million Bitcoins that are available. That's the national number. We, we have the pods, we'll try to mine as many of those that are available. So there's, no matter where you are in the world, there are only 21 million Bitcoin that's available to be mined.
Right, but how many of these facilities have you built?
Well, this is the, for us, this is, we have, this is the first one in Indiana. And that's why we'll have, we'll start with 20 pods, or 40 pods, as the energy, as we build out that substation to handle the power.
Okay.
We are, in full disclosure, we are looking at Oklahoma as well.
So this is the first one you guys have built?
This will be the first one that'll be off-
How do I listen to you guys?
Any other questions or comments?
I see they're out there working today. They're in the dirt. I know they're out there, quite a bit of dirt today.
Yeah.
If I mute my mic, how do I listen?
Hey, Marcus.
How many? How do you turn off the camera?
Oh, so tonight, what will, kind of the process would be, we would pass the, the one resolution for tonight, and then we would have a public hearing on the confirmatory resolution at the next meeting. I think the history in Grant County, you know, we hear tax abatement, and we hear, you know, how Marion has done different things with their abatements and things, and that maybe hasn't worked out as well as they'd hoped. I, I like the idea of this concept, how it's phased in, and it's a three-year commitment. I like the idea that the jobs are high-paying, you know, the ramp up to 30 employees. It's near a substation where you're not necessarily taking, you know, some of the best ground in the county out of production.
Sure.
But I, I would support this project and pass him this resolution.
One, one other thing, if I could interject, is Your Choice is, one of the, one of the reasons why they came to Indiana is because, obviously because of Jay Chu and his expertise in running business. But the other reason why they came to Indiana, one, is because they want to be in an area where they can inject themselves into the community. That's very important to them. The other thing, we, we will do intern programs with a high school, with Taylor University. We've already started having conversations about that. Because cryptocurrency, whatever, and whatever form it is, is going to be the digital currency that we're going to go to. It's, it's, whether we like it or not, I like having the money in my pocket. My wife doesn't agree with that, but I like having the money in my pocket. But this is going to be the new currency for the new age. This is what they're going to be going to. But Your Choice Digital will inject themselves in the community. There will be home purchases for all employees that are, that don't currently live here. We're also going to be injecting in the community to volunteer, do programs within the community. I know you guys hear this a lot from anyone coming up and asking for things like this. But I would tell you that J just fire works when we're done, when we start, just by how we work. And then I think you'll find that Your Choice, Jay will be involved, I'll be involved in this project through the onset. And I will just say for the record, I have a history in Marion. I used to work at WBAT Radio years ago. I'll just say that. If you don't like them, then I didn't work there. But if I did, I was, I worked there for a while. But, and Charity, Economic Growth Council, have been fantastic. So if you ever have a question for me, you can reach out to Charity, or you can contact me directly and be happy to answer them for you.
Well, I think the three-year abatement part phased in, I think that we probably should have went through the packet a bit better. Talking about 100% and then 60 and 30, so in three years, you're up to speed. That gives me a little bit more satisfaction to know that you're serious.
Yeah.
Not asking for five and 10. Because what usually happens on these, as much as Charity and I have had these conversations, is people come in, they oversell, and they under-deliver.
Sure.
And then we're all stuck holding the bag.
Sure.
So I appreciate your honesty in the packet and everything else.
Of course. Shane had a question for you. Marion, where are they annexed? Marion's not going to go out and take this, are they? I know they have a half mile each side of Old 18. Now, the Old 18, not the four lane of it. But it seems like to me they went a mile or so each side of 18, down 69 a half mile on each side of it. Now, Marion going to come and annex this?
It's a quarter mile shot.
Well, I guess that's always a possibility, but-
Because it's going to be a quarter of a mile north of the first-
I guess that may be your field question.
Well, I don't know. I don't know if they're contiguous. There are a lot of requirements you have to meet now to annex anything. And I don't know whether they ever have enough contiguous ground space they're, they're able to annex or not. I don't know. You have to look at a map to really figure that out.
I mean, there've been too many projects in that square mile, started and stopped, and it's a mess out there.
And that's why I don't know, because I, I don't know exactly where the lines are in relationship to where the property is going to go.
Once the tax abatement's in place at the county level, can a city come in and-
I think it's still annexed, they annex it with the tax abatement in place. Can a next change?
Good question. Any other questions or comments?
This is all so new to me. I don't know if I'm talking to Orville Wilbur Wright or the Wizard of Oz. And I'm not sure which it is here. I think of the old saying, be not the first by whom the new is tried, nor yet the last to lay the oldest son. Best is yet to be, maybe. I, I just don't know. I don't know what I want to do with this. I don't, I don't know what we should do. I know my grandkids would tell me, yes, but I know what my conservative background says. There's nothing to this. It's, it's nothing there. It's the Wizard of Oz. Here, look. Don't look over there. Look over here.
Yes, sir.
So I, I don't know. I'm just-
Let me respond to that by saying that I work for the Wizard of Oz. I'm an attorney. I don't make widgets. It's a service industry. That's the way I understand it. And all I care about is hearing 30 jobs that are going to be paid in US currency.
Yes, sir.
And not Bitcoin, so.
You don't wish Trump's stop.
The only thing I know about Bitcoin is what you just told me, a little osmosis and an episode of Big Bang Theory. And that's it.
That's a great episode.
I don't care if they're making monopoly money. It's, what matters to me is the jobs and real people in Grant County being paid real money.
Will they? That's the question, I guess.
Well, I, you know, you don't, there's law protecting people that don't get paid. And if somebody works for two weeks and don't get a paycheck, they're not going to work for Bitcoin.
If I can interject, Bitcoin in China was outlawed April, it was April of last year, correct? China said, no Bitcoin. And the reason why is because the blockchain prevented payouts, payoffs. So all of those Bitcoin operators in China had to go somewhere. It was either the United States, Iceland, or Russia. They chose to come here. And the reason why is because of the ample power and the climate. Grant County is perfect because we have, you have a winter in Grant County. You have a summer. The power is here. So if, if it's not Grant County, they'll go somewhere else. And, but I want to say that they're willing to commit $122 million between now and 2025 to be in Grant County. And those jobs are real. That pay rate is real. So we're willing to commit to Grant County. Grant County will commit to us.
Have they tried going to other places in Indiana already?
We are going, we are located at other places as well to set up another location, another location.
Have you been turned away anywhere?
No, sir. No, sir, we have not. Can I make an introduction to you really quick?
Yes, go ahead.
You introduce yourself, Suzy.
Thanks. Thanks, Lawrence. My name is Suzy Jabarowski. I'm from Fishers, Indiana. I am partners with Jay and American Energy Global, which is kind of the infrastructure company that's working, hopefully, all over the country to try to build in the infrastructure so that digital currency companies can come and flourish in the United States. And so Lawrence did a really good job of outlining exactly what the plans are for here in Grant County and how this operation will work, very similar to a data center kind of operation. What I'm doing with Jay is we are looking all over the country, and in some cases, all over the world, for electricity. This is a highly electric, highly capital-intensive industry. It's a multi-billion dollar industry, where even the US government is thinking about developing their own form of digital currency to be part of this marketplace. So it is a real industry. It is an extremely profitable industry. And last spring, when China outlawed crypto mining, mostly because they couldn't track it and tax it the way they wanted to be able to do it, it gave people a lot of freedom to buy things. They didn't want them to buy in China or things that were- it gave people a lot of freedom to buy things. They didn't want them to buy in China or things that were made outside of China, et cetera. So they banned it. And so I want to just make sure that we're making a distinction between Chinese government and what they did, and then the Chinese business people who are immigrants looking for a place to develop this very profitable business. They could have gone to, they're looking for stable places with lots of electricity, good communities, place to work their business. They could have gone to Russia. That's a place that really wanted to have this industry. They could have come to the United States. They could go to Africa. There are a lot of places around the globe where they could access electricity. But it doesn't have all of the security, protection, community, economic stability that the United States offers. So we also think of this as a way that the U.S. can capture, nurture, and grow an industry where we're taking jobs away from China, except us sending jobs to China. And then also a way that the United States, at a time where so many high-intensive energy jobs are becoming the new next generation of what our economy will develop into, this is a way that a high-profit industry can build out, on behalf of counties and cities and states in the United States, build out the energy infrastructure that then can support electric vehicle development, high-speed computing, life sciences, things that require a lot of electricity. So the crypto industry is right now, we are actively looking in Oklahoma. We also have a site, three sites that are under consideration in Mississippi. We're looking anywhere where we can find large-scale electricity that can then scale up and where we can work in a community that understands exactly what they're getting into, and they want to have these kinds of jobs. Any questions for me?
Is there any questions?
Thank you.
The one thing I might remind the council is, this is only the first step. So even if you want to think about this longer, if you pass this tonight, the auditor's office then has to publish notice in the paper for a public hearing. And that hearing will be at the next meeting. So you have a chance to listen to what the public says and then make a final decision. So passing it tonight does not put this in stone, why any?
Any other questions or comments from the members?
I would just comment. I don't remember why I said before, but I think if you drive around Grant County and look at all the closed factories and and empty fields that used to be manufacturing factories. And I think we'd be crazy not to support this. There are, I'm sure, communities that would count for high-tech and computer industry coming in. This is what we prayed for when we lost all these other industries, is please let high-tech companies find Grant County in the end. What's not to like? You know, again, I might not want to be paid in Bitcoin. But, you know, that's, so what?
I'd be happy to be paid with Bitcoin, quite honestly.
Yeah.
Pretty good right now. Yeah, it's really good.
My further hesitancy comes from my experience as the former director of the YMCA that was sold a bill of goods by a gentleman who was going to bring jobs to Marion and renovate a downtown facility and put some money into it, and was a very well-meaning, had all the promises, some of the same things we've heard here. And then he got waylaid by some people in town that weren't totally honest.
Sure.
So I want to, I mean, I believed in that. I want to believe in this. I would like to. I just, just a little hesitant.
Understood. We believe that transparency will be key, and we will be transparent. If you ask us a direct question, we'll answer you directly. And then once the site is operational, you are more than welcome to come out to the site. And we'll show you Bitcoin mining in action. We'll show you live-time Bitcoin mining in action.
There's a great example in West Texas called the Whitestone Cryptocurrency Hub. And it is about a six-hundred-megawatt major alpha-beaten path. But it is rows of extremely well-done, well-organized, well-managed crypto mining. It looks like a big data center. And they are, they have videos on YouTube. They do tours all the time. They invite people to come as a learning center so that people can see exactly what it is. And that's a good place to, if you want to look up an example, that's a really good place. They have a lot of educational tools about that. And one thing to just be really clear about, too, is that we're looking for low-cost, very stable, preferably clean, carbon-free energy. That's a hard thing to find. And that is here. That is something that is part of your infrastructure through the AEP system. And so that is really attractive to us. We don't want to go anywhere else. There are places that we're concerned because it's so heavy of natural gas, and the price of natural gas is going up and down. And so when we have conversations with people in those areas, we're very straightforward about if the price of natural gas gets too high, it's not going to work for us. So just everybody's got to be on the same page. We don't have that problem here. That makes to you very attractive as a place to do business, the stable cost of electricity that is mostly from all carbon-free sources. And we worked, as Lawrence said, very good relationship with AEP, and they've been fantastic to work with. And Mike, I would say from the tax abatement perspective, you as a council and the company, the company has a responsibility to fill out compliance paperwork. And you as a council have a chance to review that. So once a year, when it comes time for that, you can look back over what was guaranteed or what we talked about, you know, during this part of the approval process, and make sure that they're on track with meeting those goals. Because you do have the ability to withdraw a tax abatement if you find that the company is not doing what they said they were going to do.
Is this an FTC-regulated business? Is crypto or Bitcoin mining an FTC-regulated business?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not as of now, no, sir.
Well, unfortunately, I came late, and I'm trying to pay it up as I listen. I'm not saying I'm against this. I abstain when that happens only because I feel that's what I should do, missing out on, you know, a portion of the conversation. But as Mr. Stevenson indicated, this is passed. We'll have plenty of time. I'll have plenty of time to catch up and learn more as we go along. But I just wanted to explain where I was at. I apologize for being late, but I think I did make it.
Any other questions or comments from the members? If there's no other questions, I entertain a motion.
If you have to help, you don't need to.
It'd be to pass or adopt the Resolution Number One dash twenty-two, the declaratory resolution of Grant County Council.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Lemming to adopt or approve Resolution Number One dash twenty-two, the declaratory resolution of the Grant County Council of Indiana Declaring Economic Revitalization Area for the Property Tax Reduction for Your Choice Digital. Is there any other questions or comments from the members? At this time, I'll allow for public input. No public input? Roll call.
Scott.
Abstain.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
I don't like tax abatement, but if they're not going to come back in three years and ask for another one.
Yes.
Rorbock. You?
No.
Pauling?
No.
Lemming?
Yes.
Middlesworth?
Yes.
Three, two.
Three, two, one. So it fails, correct? So the motion fails?
Question. Can we consider this at another meeting? If Mr. Scott's here can hear everything, maybe not abstain the next consideration?
We make the motion the next meeting, that's your question. You can move the next meeting, pass it on the declaratory if you wanted to.
Okay.
So do we want to put this on the agenda for the next meeting then, or?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Can you let me know what needs to happen with the next meeting?
Okay. I think the thought process right now is, you know, obviously that failed thinking. We heard more information possibly that we put on the agenda for the next meeting. If you want to go ahead and do your update or move into that transition?
Yep.
I'll be fine.
Are you ready for that? Okay. So like I said, I'm Charity Bailey, Executive Director at the Grant County Economic Growth Council. When I took this position in January, I met with Shane and just asked if if there was a benefit to the Growth Council coming to speak with you all on some sort of regular basis so that you could hear what's going on in economic development throughout Grant County. So that's why I'm here tonight. This is the first of those quarterly, we settled on quarterly meetings. And since some of you don't know me, I thought I'd give a little bit of background on who I am. I have five years of experience in economic development. I have a bachelor's and a master's degree in psychology. My master's degree has a concentration in industrial organizational psychology. I've lived in Grant County for nine years. I'm married with three kids, all in the Eastbrook School District. So that's what part of the community we're on. I am finishing up the Oklahoma University Economic Development Institute certification this year, which I think is important for me to have. So since I haven't spoken with you before, and maybe not have heard some updates from the Growth Council, I thought I would recap 2021 mostly for you tonight. The Growth Council focuses on five areas: business retention and expansion, attraction, workforce, entrepreneurship, and collaboration. So those are the five areas that all of our work falls into. So business retention and expansion, in 2021, we had fifteen projects that were businesses who were already here that needed something to keep them here or grow them. We did thirteen business visits, and that's where the Growth Council team takes some local elected officials or our board members, and we go and we talk to a business and find out what their challenges are, what their workforce is like, what needs they might have. So we did thirteen of those. At the beginning of 2021, we were hosting COVID calls with businesses, healthcare, and emergency management. Those usually averaged about thirteen, I'm sorry, about thirty people each call. And then we hosted four manufacturing lunches, and that is just a time for our manufacturers to get together and to talk about their industries, their shipping and, you know, supply shortages, all of that. It's just a chance for them to get together and talk about their work. And we are happy to be a part of those lunches. Attraction. We had sixteen new business projects last year. We had seventy-seven requests for information from the state of Indiana regarding sites in Grant County. And between Tim Eckley and myself
Before you all leave.
Can I just interrupt a second? Was the vote, because I'm beginning to think about, we had four, that's a majority.
Yeah, you had four.
Did you say three, two, one?
Fail if it was one, two, three.
I said four, two, one.
I didn't like that.
Did Mr. Hicks vote no?
No.
No, he voted yes.
I couldn't hear.
Yeah, that's what I was questioning. That's why.
That's what I thought, too. I thought we
I'm sorry. We should, I mean
Who made the motion? Who made the motion? And who seconded? Okay, then how did we vote? Can you review the votes?
Yep. Scott abstained. Connor, yes. Hicks, yes. Rorbock, no. Pauling, no. Lemming and Middlesworth, yes.
So, yeah, the motion carried. Did you say that? Maybe I missed it.
You don't have a microphone, and that
I thought you said three, two, one.
That's what I thought, too.
So that motion does carry. So it's to the next reading. Sorry about that. We're new to this, I guess.
Five, six to two? Five, five to two?
That's
Four, one, two, and one.
I abstained.
He abstained.
I abstained because I was like
I thought you said three, two, one. That's why
Frank, your soft voice caused all this.
Need a little excitement.
You should have said, but you should have said, hey, it passed. Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay. That was worth going back.
So Charity, congratulations.
Yeah, that's worth going back for.
So that moves, that'll move to the public hearing at the next meeting. Okay. Just so we got that.
No, yeah, no, that's perfectly fine. So I was just finishing on the attraction part that we, between Tim Eckley and myself, we did attend three consultant visits in various places throughout the United States. What that does is it allows us to go and see consultants and talk about Grant County and even the region and what we're doing here. And it puts Grant County on the map for future projects. Workforce. Last year, we hosted three job fairs. I co-chair the Twenty First Century Talent Coalition, which is a state initiative. I co-chair that with Kylie Jackson from the Chamber of Commerce. We participate in an HR group for Grant County. We had eleven Grant for Grads recipients, which is our home-buying program. So eleven recipients includes spouses and children, if there are any of the families. So that's a great thing that we were able to track last year. And we did post over a hundred jobs on our social media and website. Entrepreneurship. Last year, we partnered with Ronald Morrell on the Young Business Owners Meetings. He did several of those. They were once a month for the first half of the year. There were three Charm Grant recipients, which is our matching grant for businesses who make changes to the outside of their business, whether that's awnings or windows or decals or sidewalks, paints, anything like that as a way to add charm. That grant comes from us. It's a thousand dollars match, so we did three of those. And we also partner with the Indiana Small Business Development Center out of Muncie. Our representative does have office hours at the Growth Council several times a month. That is a resource for startups and people who are interested in growing their small business. Finally, for collaboration, last year, we are a part of the Solar Ordinance process in scripting that and working with all parties involved there. We've been a part of EV conversations. We work with adult basic education. And we participated in the Ready Grants and ARP Money meetings as well. So that was just a quick recap of last year. Since stepping into the role, my goals are obviously to finish the OU program. I want to learn more about regional partners and the IEDC, IEDA. I want to build relationships with local elected officials, such as yourselves. I look forward to getting to know all of you and your roles here in our community, educators, businesses, and contributors, or other relationships. The Growth Council needs to have a strategic plan, so I will be working on that this year with our Board of Directors. I'm excited to get to know the small business community. There is a lot of activity in the small business world that I've been really fortunate already. There is a lot of activity in the small business world that I've been really fortunate already to get to know several people who are starting businesses, and that's been a real joy. I am looking forward to getting to know some of the councils in the other communities, like Sweetsir and Swayze, Fallerton. I've gotten to meet them kind of on the periphery throughout my years here in Grant County, but I'm looking forward to working with them. Another goal is to highlight the work of the university students. We have two well-known universities plus a community college, and I feel like we we don't highlight their accomplishments enough, so I'm looking forward to doing that. We need to update our sites and buildings database so that we can better market our area. And I hope to hire a new team member this year. Somebody to, not going to be an administrative assistant, but somebody with some finance background that can become an active team member at the Growth Council. And then the last thing is better education of what the Growth Council does. And that's where things like this come in handy, so that I can talk about all the things that we do. And I'll just end with some highlights from 2022 so far. We have posted 54 jobs on social media. We have seven projects in the works, five are new, two are existing. We've had 17 requests for information so far from the state of Indiana. I've done seven business visits. I've had four conversations with housing developers, which I think is a great thing. That's something that we all know that Grant County needs more housing, nice housing. And so those are ongoing conversations that I'm having. I've had four small business development meetings, and we've had two Grant for Grad recipients, and Solar Ready is ongoing. So that's what so far the first three months have looked like since I've been Executive Director. Just a few things on my plate. Thank you for letting me speak tonight, and I look forward to doing this again, like I said, quarterly. So in the meantime, I guess I'll see you next month with-
Yeah, maybe we need a class on how to-
With your choice digital, and then-
Maybe we all need some areas or something. I appreciate the update, and I think it's a good opportunity for you to showcase, you know, what the Growth Council has done. We, as a council, appreciate that update, and we look forward to, you know, working together with you as well. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, I'll see you again at another time.
Thank you. Next item under new business, item B, Public Defender Bruce Elliott with the transfer of appropriations. He did email this evening and said he had a family emergency and he would not be here. And he did request to go to the April meeting. However, if you would like to do so, we could suspend the rules and then go ahead and make the transfer as requested, or we can move it to the next meeting.
Make a motion to suspend the rules for $3,000 to take care of.
So I have a motion to suspend the rules from Mr. Lemming, a second from Mr. Connor. Is there any other questions or comments? Public input, roll call?
Scott.
Aye.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Roebach.
Aye.
Pauling.
Lemming.
Yes.
Middlesworth.
Yes. So the rules are suspended. Motion to transfer 3,000 from Depositions Fund to Expert Witness Fund.
Arrived.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Scott, to approve the transfer of $3,000 within the Public Defenders Depositions and Transcriptions Fund to Expert Witness Fund. Any other questions or comments? Public input? Roll call, please.
Scott.
Aye.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Roebach.
Aye.
Pauling.
Yes.
Lemming.
Aye.
Middlesworth.
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Next item under new business, County IT Department Marcus Elliott. Approval seek lease purchase proposal for equipment.
Yep, thanks again, gentlemen. Yeah, I'm just coming up front to request permission so we can explore leasing options for the recent RFP we just rewarded. As you all know, we're in the process, we were in the process of getting pricing and stuff for our data center renovations or revitalizations. And we rewarded the D and N group out of Illinois for the project for the amount of $334,586. So like I said, with the lease, you know, I was just thinking we would get like another dollar buyout lease, kind of like how we had with our storage previously. So it would be around the same amount. The storage was $327,000, I believe, and that was on a four-year. So I was thinking we could go with a four- or five-year deal for this as well. So I was just wanting to get everybody's blessing on that, so we can proceed.
So the request is to enter into that lease, and you-
Well, there's, I haven't even gotten any lease options yet. This is just to, you know, so we can enter into one. I'll probably get different ones. Last time, we, I believe Commissioner Burton got the one for the storage, and he went with a couple, talked with a couple banks in town, and we wound up going with Star because they had better rate and stuff on theirs. So it'd be a similar deal to that, so probably what we'll do, we'll just get a couple different options, leasing options, and then I'll present that to the commissioners. And then they'll choose whether or not to bless it or give it forward or not.
Your current funding structure supports lease payment?
Correct, yes. Yeah, so basically, before, there was about $88,000 a year that came out of our equipment budget for our storage payment. So we made our final payment on our storage back in November, December of last year. So that money is now freed up to be used towards this, so it won't be any extra. We'd basically just be taking those funds and using it towards this.
Any questions or comments? I guess the recommendation would be to go ahead and get the information too, so we can review it.
Okay. So are you wanting like different leasing options, or like? Yeah, because I was just told I had to come in front of you guys to get permission so we could start looking into the leases.
We're not moving forward without your blessing.
Right, so, yeah, that was kind of sealed.
I guess, I can't remember how we've done it in the past. I thought you'd get three quotes from different banks, correct? And then different vendors as well?
Correct, yeah.
And then you'd bring it to the commissioners, then to the council, as long as your funds support that lease payment.
Last time, I wasn't really involved too much in it. 2016 was the first year I became IT Director, so Commissioner Burton really kind of took the reins on that. So I pretty much got the project approved, and that's when we moved forward on it.
Do you have any other questions or comments?
I think it hurts to get proposals.
The way I know what the money is, I should have thought of this first. Go ahead and seek proposals, I think.
Okay. All right. Sounds good, thanks again, gentlemen.
Thanks. Next item under new business, County Commissioner Mark Bartzlee. Facility condition assessment, asset planning services, space planning analysis.
Good evening, gentlemen. Hope you're doing well. We'll try and move through this very quickly, but I've got a couple of different points that really culminate in the same thrust. At current, we do not have a current accurate assessment on our property. We still believe we need a management tool to make that happen so that we can assess what we have here. We've been challenged to look at the potential of a new campus, and we're going to have to somehow do a comparison that shows us what expenses are, what future expenses could be, and whether it's a positive thing to consider. We have started at least a dialogue with a group called Envoy, and there's some others we're going to dialogue with, that would help us to look at this campus concept at a different location. We haven't signed any type of agreements or directives yet, we're trying to still get some information on that. But the point is, we really still need to look at a current campus cost versus the possibility of a new campus and facilities. The commissioners still believe that our best assessment on what we have would come through Amaresco. Envoy actually talked to us about Amaresco's tool, and that's the tool that they've been talking to us about, and they were very positive on that. So again, we, did you receive information about the costs associated with that study? You did not? Okay.
We presented it last meeting.
It was in hand last month?
It could have been.
And those were the quotes that were presented at $19,820. A one-time space plan, $1,900, and then a five-year schedule of software support payments. Basically, what I'll do is I'll turn the mic over to Mark Airbrand from Amaresco so that you can ask any other questions, and we'll go from there.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Mark Airbrand, I'm Senior County Executive with Amaresco. With me tonight, I have Karen Evans, who is our Director of Engineering with Amaresco. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. As you know, we were at your last council meeting to, we had the opportunity to present at your last council meeting, as well as the County Commissioners' meeting, to talk about a strategy that might be able to help the county to evaluate the conditions of your buildings, and also perform a spatialization study to look at opportunities for efficiencies in your operations. The study will provide the county with information to help you to prioritize, make good investments into your building, or decide whether to build new. With some more details, I'll have Karen Evans share with you the pricing structure.
Good evening. I'll try to make this brief, although I gotta admit, I do know a little bit more about Bitcoin than I did before this. It was interesting. Again, my name is Karen-
I'd like to sell you some.
After the meeting, but it's nothing, right? So I get it. No, my name is Karen Evans, I'm with Amaresco, I've been up here a couple times, you know, the last couple months. The big key here is, we understand the position you guys are in. You know, I mean, do we stay here, do we move there? What do we do? Do we buy new, do we build new? This tool, as the commissioner had mentioned, that there are a lot of architectural firms, not just here in Indiana, but around the Midwest, around the country, that use this tool because it's a pretty quick, easy, and quite frankly, low-cost tool to pull this information into one spot, one database. It would be your main six buildings, approximately 285,000 square feet. Our database right now, and it changes, but it has about 3.2 billion square feet in it, over 110,000 buildings in this system. But basically, this is a tool so that you can make educated investment decisions, right? You'll learn about the current state of the buildings, as well as what your planning needs are. If you don't have a copy of this, we'll make sure that you get this. I know it was presented at the Commissioners' meeting last week, it was tabled for this discussion. But the couple points I just want to hit is that it's a hosted software solution. We've kind of heard about this, leasing and servers and all this stuff. You guys don't have to have a server for this, it's not software, it's computers, your IT doesn't need to do anything with it. We just give you a login, it's web access. And it's not necessarily meant for everyone here to have to use it. The reality is, we have an ongoing service fee that, basically, you tell us what reports you want, what data you need, what information you need, what your agenda is for a meeting, and we can customize and craft those reports for you all. But the idea is that it's fully hosted, it'll be backed up, unlimited users. You can access it through smart devices, mobile devices. The upgrades are included in these fees. We'll do the setup, the training, and then we're here to support you. Again, it's not, we're not asking everyone to be a Building Facility Condition Index Expert and know how to use this tool. It is a very easy dashboard to look at and get information from, but the reality is, we're here to support you. It's basically two-pronged approach. What do you have now? What is the condition of the buildings that you have now? What is your deferred maintenance? What can you expect your budgets to be for capital improvements, roofs, windows, flooring, carpet, furnishings? All these things, MEP systems, over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years, looking out. So what is that now? And Commissioner Bartzlee had mentioned that, that's a $19,820. That chunk is to say everything up to date in that database, in that system, so roughly half the cost. The other half is for space planning. So here's what we have in terms of space now in all our different departments. What is it that these departments need? What do they typically need? What are standards that they would have? And then how much are they, do they have enough? Not enough, too much, do we need to reallocate, reportion? And the idea being, do you have that in existing facilities? Or is it simply the fact that you don't have enough? You know, for a while, when we first did this, go around with this back in 2015, we had looked at the Salem Bank, could we move some different things over to that building free of space in these buildings, reorganize departments? That's what that space planning is. And that's just under 22,000, so roughly half. And then it's a subscription fee, so five years of software updates, all that support, the reports, all that that I mentioned. That starts at 4,200, goes up to 4,800. So all in, over a five-year period, it's about a 60, it's a $65-ish thousand investment. And the way we look at that is that it's, yeah, it's good money to help make decisions on really big money. And that's, you know, and we talked a couple meetings ago, you know, what you could do with $10 million. This is less than 1% of that to help make these educated decisions on, you know, what, where would we go? What would we build, you know, what would be included? So we feel like it's a really good tool, it's a tool that gets used by a lot of professional companies, whether it's Amaresco doing the work, or them doing it using our tool. So if there's any questions, that's my presentation.
Questions? There's no questions? I will just follow up a little bit, we did, myself and the commissioners, Mr. Living and Mr. Pauling were going to be there, but things come up. And we did meet with Envoy, and they did, you know, like Amaresco's services. I guess it comes down to, do you want the data to tell you what's wrong with your buildings? And, you know, what space is needed? Or do you kind of have in mind what's already needed in those buildings? And you don't need the study done? You know, typically, my opinion is that we've spent money on studies and we've never followed through with them. So how would this one be any different? Obviously, there's some thought process behind gathering the data for the courthouse to know, you know, exactly how much it would cost to make that building last long-term. I guess that will go up. That can play into, in my eyes, I think, you know, there's no parking, there's, you know, space, there needs to be more space, the security. So for me, I personally don't need the data, but some of the others may need the data to say, yeah, if we spent X amount, that building could be, you know, in good shape for years to come. The other buildings, you know, that's, you know, something that you could use as a tool for long-term planning and management. for long-term planning and management. Probably, again, Envoy said, you know, Amaraesco is one of those, the best there is, I guess, or, you know, in this area anyway, so.
Yeah. You did hit on it. This is a good way to memorialize all this data into a database. So people come and go, you know, conversations happen and change, and you'll get a quote from this person or a report from this. I do like the fact this is a, I don't like to use the word living, it's not alive, it's a database, right? It's information, but it is manageable. It can be changed and updated if you decide you do move all these buildings. We can track. We sold this facility. We added this facility. We built this one. So it is something that I, because I'm a firm believer, like my old boss used to call it credenza ware, you know, people spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on studies and they go in these big binders and they sit on somebody's credenza behind their desk and no one ever looks at it. So, yeah, we're vehemently opposed to that idea. This is something that we would, you know, intend that you guys would use and that will help you use it, you know, to make these decisions. Because, you know, we're talking tens of millions of dollars of, you know, potential construction and expenses. So this will help you. And if someone were to ask questions, we can provide the reports that show why you didn't want to use this building or didn't want to move this space.
Well, I'm like Shane. And I can't see spending the money. I mean, exactly, when you look at all the maintenance, everything you guys spend, you gotta build a new building. It's gonna be more efficient, less maintenance. It's a no-brainer. You add up all your figures, you're gonna save so much bill, money by building a one-story. No elevator maintenance. I mean, you guys can't even imagine what you'll save. Water, heat in the floors, I mean, own the building, you guys will save, well, you'll save two point three million for digging some ditches. And I did some price checking and I can get a hundred thousand foot shell without concrete for a million and a half to two million. So that's three, three hundred thousand you're saving to put in the inside of it. Even if you had to put another eight million in it, you're gonna save so much money over the long term. And I believe if you turned that into historical, you helped downtown Marion grow, just like they did in Noblesville, when they moved theirs out.
Just make a point of order. You're one of us guys now.
Right.
Can't just keep saying "you guys" like you're pushing on someone else.
Well, I was gonna say. You brought up Noblesville. I'm a county commissioner there. There are all county offices in the county courthouse. There are nobody else other than county offices, treasure.
Yeah, but make downtown grow. More people invested because you had more parking.
Well, there's a parking garage that's being built right now.
Right.
There's two of them. And then additionally, there's a streetscape that's gonna provide more parking as well.
Right, but I believe this one definitely helped downtown Marion. It helped the county not paying all the bills, all the maintenance.
Yeah, but there are no, there's only county offices in that county courthouse. Nothing else. I just wanted to make sure you knew that. But this creates action items, is what this does, this whole program.
I think for me, the biggest problem is, I think it's a great scenario of what you have, but we still have to find someone to run it if that's the case. I just don't think you say, oh, here's.
Well, what we would propose would be to do this, come and present it, put a priority list of action items together, what those costs would be, and then it's your decision on how you guys would want to move forward with it. But it would give you fact-based information about what your buildings have, what the investments would have to be to keep them up-to-date. And then if you don't want to spend that money on that particular building, you could invest those dollars into something new and so forth. So that's really what it is, but we would come and we would give you all of that information.
But I mean, if it's, it's Karen, right?
Yes.
Yeah, if it's a living-type application, we have to run it to make it worthwhile. Otherwise, we're just, again, throwing money at other consultants, no offense, but.
No, and I think, I'll use an example. We have the system in, it's, I think, the sixth or seventh largest school system, public school system in Ohio, a suburb of Columbus. And they made this investment, they did it in thirty-two school buildings, four high schools. I mean, there's fourteen and fifteen thousand kids in this district. Their CFO just calls us monthly, every couple of months, I'm going to the board, I need this, this, and this. And he literally is doing what we're talking about. He's making, presenting the reports to the board on, we recommend we close these schools, build two new ones in these areas, upgrade these buildings, you know, make the investments here and there. But I hear what you're saying, Councilman Loving, I, we don't want this to be sat out there and then you guys gotta be experts on it. The reality is, that's what the support fees are so that we can help you use this. So when you say, hey, give us a report that shows us what we got, what do we expect in this courthouse in the next ten years, fifteen years? What literally should we be planning to invest in that? And then weigh that against, okay, what would it cost to run a new building? I don't want to speak on behalf of Envoy. I mean, we know them, you know, they're doing a lot of work in the state of Indiana, but we could work with them and say, all right, guys, this is what they have now. You're looking at what a potential new building could cost. Let's weigh the two together and work with them. I mean, we know those guys, so, you know, we could help you guys make those decisions. And it could be some working groups, working sessions, you know, where we'd get a committee of people together, lay it all out on the table. My feeling is, I don't want to do a project that people regret, right? And we make investments in these facilities, you need them, you use them every day, but we definitely want to make sure we help you guys make the right decision. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments from the members?
Sitting here, just sunk in, I am gonna be finishing out my twentieth year on the county council. And I'm not saying that I have all the answers and I know everything and an expert, but I've heard enough from citizens, I've heard enough from county employees to have a fairly good idea of what we are facing with our buildings and our space right now. And I feel like that wherever I may lack, that we can survey, we can set up a Google form and survey our department heads and get a better idea of what we're looking at. I mean, me personally, I want to look forward to what we can do over the next twenty, thirty, forty years and beyond. I want to see what that looks like. I feel like I have a fairly good idea of what we have right now. I want a plan that's going to put it to where we need to go for the future. That's more of what I think that I'm looking at. And we know we have a hundred and forty-year-old building in the courthouse, which is still standing and doing, you know, there's good bones in that building. I feel like it has reached its time to where we need to look at something different that is going to be, that is going to suit our needs more efficiently and effectively in today's world. And you look at the complex, you know, here and, you know, and the rest of our buildings. We need a lot of updates. I just, I've said it before, I do not feel like that we need to continue putting Band-Aids on these structures, that we need to work towards putting a plan of the future in place and work towards that and not spend any money on anything in the past, if that makes sense.
So are we asking Amaraesco to do something different than they did in the past? It doesn't seem like it was that long ago that we got them in to show us how to put the Band-Aids on our current buildings and limp along and not have to build new properties. Were they not asked then, Mark, to tell us whether that was worthwhile? And, no, hey, you don't want to slap a bunch of work and money into the old Spencer Hotel. Your money'd be better spent building a new building. Were they not asked to do that? If they were, why didn't we hear about that then, instead of getting this request for more money to do another study now? Which the way I'm hearing it is, this is a database to advise us, well, this is what's gonna cost to meet your needs with old buildings, here's the alternative building now. You following me?
I followed the chain of questions and I hope I hit most of them. But remember, when we brought Amaraesco on, it was for energy savings in this building and in the jail in order to make it last longer while we develop. Now, the initial studies that we did on the Salem Bank and then a little bit more, we got a snapshot of our buildings, I wanna say fifteen. Is that when it was? And we didn't move any forward on that except continue to do the patch and spend. The question that we're wrestling with for the commissioners is, we don't have this forty-plus thousand dollars in our budget. And if we bring back to you a request for an additional appropriation for this, it would be to study all of our assets we have right now with prudence. We think we need that data and information because if we can put three million into these buildings here instead of going out and ten-plus million dollars elsewhere, then we have to wrestle with that and finally say yes or no. But if we do not have the data, then we are going to be questioned and checked at every turn by our constituents. That's going on in ordinance process right now and it'll do the exact same thing as we wrestle with relocation of potentially the county seat.
You're saying what I was thinking, which is, if you just announced to taxpayers, we're gonna build a ten-million-dollar new building to house county government, the question's gonna be asked, well, what data did you base that decision on? Did you look into making your existing facilities work before you come to us and want to spend this kind of money? So I understand the need for data, but as I was alluded to, maybe we already know, maybe we already have that information. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out for discussion purposes. And before I forget too, any thinking about if a new building was built, whether it would be in the downtown area or out in the county?
We have looked at different potential concepts of campus. We're still in negotiations for that. As you know, we have eighty-plus acres out on Garthway Road, but technically, that would be a move outside of the county seat, which would take a legislating process down at Indianapolis to change because that happens to be in Gas City municipality.
We need to have it be in county seat.
When it comes to some other properties that we've looked at, we've looked at south, we're looking to the, just to the east to see if that's still part of the Marion municipal system. Therefore, we don't have to worry about a change in county seat. So as we're looking at all these, we're gonna have quite an orchestration of things that are going on to make decisions. And so this forty-plus thousand dollars will, I think, give us foundation that when people start asking questions, if we make that next move, we'll have, we'll have good reason to do it, not just say.
Will the public be able to access this website?
You could put a dashboard. True. If you wanted to have a dashboard that had some of the basic information, you could put that on, we could put a link on that on your website. I wouldn't recommend public having access to, getting into it. I mean, that would be restricted to county, county employees or, you know, members of council commissioners. But again, I want to make sure that everybody understands the high-level reports, the things you could download, the ideas that we're here to help you use that. When you say, I want to look at what this building specifically needs in the next ten years, we get that report to you.
Once that comes to you or to the commissioners, it is a public document and they're.
Right.
Would be open to scrutiny, those documents. But I guess, I've been here, like Mike said, I've been here a few years and I'm thinking that based on what Mr. Connor said, if you just look backwards, you can see what you spent. If we could all predict the future, we wouldn't be in these jobs, what we're in. Obviously, we would be doing other things. I get asked that every day, hey, you got a crystal ball, what's the next stock to buy? You know? I just think that, I know that you're using math and calculations and yada yada to get where you're wanting to go with it, but I think that we're all sitting here thinking, do we spend more money when we already in our minds think it's another waste of money if we're really thinking that we need to put at least something in new facility to get us started? And if all we do is start a new facility and we add on to it as a, as a campus would grow, that's kind of our plan as far as a growth plan. That would make sense to me. And we would still need that program for the new campus? And, okay, so.
The space planning.
Are these different? Are they, you're saying if you did this now, this is gonna incorporate your new stuff and there's no more cost to it? Because I thought that you said that there was a forty-two-hundred dollars, is that a month or a year?
Yeah, no, that's a year. That's an annual, just for us to support and the software and service because we're hosting, storing all that information on a server. The one thing I would say is, if you guys decide you wanted to go, you're gonna build this new campus, the first thing you're gonna do is go out and do an RFQ and probably get a professional on board, architect, builder, BOT, however, whatever method you're gonna do. The cost to do that, if it's just ten million dollars, which I strongly disagree that you're gonna be able to build a quality government building for ten million dollars, but that, we'll let the numbers pair that out. I mean, we're seeing three hundred, three hundred fifty dollars a square foot for government-type buildings. Please fire county government operations, not a jail. Jail, now you're talking four hundred to five hundred dollars per square foot. But in any case, depending on what you decide to move and what you don't move, you would bring a professional contractor, or, excuse me, architect, engineering firm on board and they would do all these things. This is a tool that you'll have, that you can utilize with whomever you decide you want to move forward with on the construction. This is the fact and based information you'll have. And I, like I said, I don't, I don't want to dismiss the sixty-five thousand dollars over five years, my, you know, a big chunk of that is a subscription, is not, it's not chump change. And I don't want to make light that it is, but I think it's substantially lower than if you just went out on the market and asked architectural engineering firms to give you this same exact deliverable. I would, I'm pretty comfortable we'd come in well under. And a lot of them would try to be less expensive by using the tool that we had, so.
So, you know, I've said this before, the two things that we'll have to overcome together will be location and what you do at the old. In my mind, I really don't need the data for the courthouse because we kind of have a general idea of how much it is, you know, just for the water and the elevators. And then how do you put a price tag on parking? How do you put a price tag on the security? How do you put a price tag on the inefficiency of the offices working together? I mean, does that scope of work, you know, that data, is it gonna spell out those areas? Probably not. So for me, when he starts talking about, you know, what do you get for ten million? I hear that more and more, you know, you're not gonna get very much for ten million, you know, three hundred dollars a square foot or whatever. So then it's, okay, you're gonna build maybe a courthouse here, but yet, do you still need that data planning for the other buildings to help you, you know, what do they need to plan for? So I guess, that's how I see it in my mind and if that helps you at all, I mean, that's where I'm at.
We'll wrestle with this issue on the twenty-second. That's our next meeting for the commissioners. My feeling right now is we will come back with a request for an appropriation for this money in order to move forward because, you know, while I totally understand, Mr. Pulling, Mr. Mills, your concept, I do feel like we need to have data in hand that will say to folks who question us, point their fingers at us and say, what have you done to really take this next step? I think we need some critical data that says, here it is.
It's no different. You got eleven million dollars in D home. I mean, that's what you're talking about right there.
Yeah, one building.
And I think you will have those questions and I think you will also have the people that's gonna come to us and be like, we elected you to make a decision. We didn't elect you to go spend sixty thousand dollars to make a decision that we elected you to make. And I think you're gonna have that. I think, I think we can always go down that route. Somebody's gonna point a finger at us. I mean, it's just, it's just the nature. I always said in my last meeting, I'm probably gonna wear a black and white official's jersey. Sometimes I feel like that I make the right call fifty percent of the time and make the wrong call the other half.
You're doing your job of making it fifty percent of the time.
Exactly, yeah. You know, based on what I hear from, from judges and other elected officials and county employees, I just feel like that I'm not in a position now that I want to explore the, what we can do that is going to, so that a hundred and forty years, you know, from now, somebody's talking about what we did and what we put in place for Grant County and for county government through the citizens of Grant County. I think we are at that point now, we are, you know, these buildings have long served our needs. I think it's, I think it's time to look forward and figure out what we can do that's going to put Grant County in a better place in the next twenty, thirty, fifty hundred years or fifty years and beyond, so.
I think we're all in that boat.
Yeah.
We're just paddling a little different direction right now.
Always mess that up.
Well, I mean, you're talking CYA in a sense, that's what you're saying. Let's spend sixty-five dollars, or sixty-five thousand, get our CYA so that we can answer the public. Here it is.
Not only CYA, but I don't know if any of you are privy to this, but when I was coming down in the elevator.
down in the elevator, I got a phone call just prior to this meeting, and we've had another explosion on some of our drain pipes inside the courthouse. So we have more water damage as of this afternoon, and that was totally unexpected. We had a analysis of the structure and our inventory right now, we have somebody that had to check our pipings and again said, you've got a problem and you need to prepare to have this changed out, so.
It's all plastic pipe.
I'm not sure that this is some plastic, I think this is the old, some of the old So I really appreciate your input, and I'm sure we'll have something for you next month.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. That concludes the new business, old business, County Highway David White, Salary Ordinance Bring us up to speed for the last meeting, if you don't mind.
Okay, I'll try to do best I can. Like I said, I think at the last meeting, basically, the increase for this year would be approximately a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, and to be honest with you, talking to the auditor's office, I have no problem starting this after April first, so really, it would kind of be less than that, about a hundred and five thousand dollars for this year to get the employees up to a wage that hopefully they'll stay and remain here for a number of years and be good employees. Just to update you a little bit, I just, I've been at Purdue all week for road school, and pretty much every county I've talked to over there are dealing with the same circumstances. They're trying to get raises for their employees to keep them. I've talked to numerous counties that are like me, that are two or three employees short of what they usually have, and me with the new federal law that came out February seventh on the CDL testing and everything, that are basically like we are, kind of disbelief of what we're going to do to get good employees with CDL license, so. Let's update you a little bit on that factor.
So we've already approved the transfers, correct?
Transfers done.
So right this evening, we're going to be amending the salary ordinance to the specified hourly rates, since it didn't pass unanimously on that first reading, so.
Just to update you a little bit, I think the last, I don't know if it was the last meeting or before, Jim was talking about the MBH fund was doing, I don't know if it was doing great, but it was doing well. And I think we've always been conservative with our money, making sure that we used it in the appropriate way as possible. Angie ran the 4B forum in the MBH fund, and it has approximately almost two million dollars that has not been appropriated. So I mean, I know if you guys remember, usually, probably in the month of May, I will come back and ask for additional money for our chip sale program, pay day program like I always have. I think you guys have brought up before, you know, it's nice to have a cushion, but we're not here as a bank to set all money, we're here to, you know, we'll take care of the road, yes. So I just let you know, it is almost two million dollars left over, it's not budgeted for 2022, so.
The other question I had, we had just a little bit of conversation via the phone about the fuel tax.
Yes.
We're the only county and the surrounding counties that have a fuel tax, and, you know, right now, fuel is really high, as we all know.
Right.
And there's been a little bit of talk about suspending the fuel tax, I don't know if the legislators are going to do that or not, but how would that affect your budget?
Well, the way I understood it, or what I seen on the news, that if they did suspend it, they was paid out of money they had left over, basically, they were going to cut the counties or locals off. I did, that's the way I understood, that they were going to use their reserve for a while. But I guess my only complaint on that is, if you're close to Ohio or Michigan or Kentucky or in Illinois, you're going to cross state line to get fuel for thirty-two cents cheaper a gallon, so, and, you know, they're not paying anything, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it'd kind of be hard on the Indiana people, that's because that's where, you know, if you're going to have somebody cross the state line and just go get fuel, because they know it's thirty-two cents a gallon cheaper, I mean, that's not going to be a benefit to the Indiana residents, so I personally, I hope they don't do it, to be honest with you.
And we talked a little bit as well, you know, EVs are not paying tax.
Right.
The history right now is saying the wheel tax is coming.
Yes.
What is the maximum amount you can set? And maybe that's a discussion at the next meeting, maybe you can present the, typically, it's July, we have to have a pass by, correct?
Right, yes.
So I think if that's something this body would entertain, I think we need to be looking at that information.
I'll try to, hopefully, like I said, I've been in road school, I'm like the person I need to get all the information for is at road school too, LTAP. But we kind of look back in 2015 of some of the information we had, and I believe, just kind of off of my head, I believe it would produce about 1.8 million.
At the time, it wasn't worth the headache, because it only paid like one mile, but since then, I think they've doubled the rate that you could charge.
Right, and that, and that was sent on like twenty-five dollars for a vehicle. The city of Marion, I think, if I remember right, was almost, they were receiving four or five hundred thousand, the city of Gas City, I believe, was three hundred and some thousand, so all the local entities would get a portion of that.
And then it does have to be spent on the roads?
Right, yes.
But the other question, can you spend it on bridges as well, or do you not?
Yes, I believe you can on that too, so, roads and bridges. And basically, it's separate from the MBH local road street and everything, it's basically, it's all money, you can't use it to buy equipment, you can't pay wages, you can't, it's just for paving, any kind of road project, so.
There's no question about, I mean, just driving around, there's a lot of roads that right now that need something.
Well, just for example, this year's local road street, I think I budgeted six hundred thousand dollars. We've had as much as a hundred thousand dollars a mile, that's six miles this year that, you know?
Yeah.
So it don't take very long to spend a lot of money, so.
Yeah, if you were at the next meeting, I would put you on for that.
Yes, I'll get all the information you need for that.
Okay. Yeah, so the request again, you know, is to amend the salary ordinance. Is there anything else you want to add, or questions from the members? If there's no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Can you motion to amend the salary ordinance as presented?
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Connor to amend the salary ordinance and to establish the rate of pay that's spelled out in this pay schedule, and then what's the start date?
It would be the April first pay.
April first pay. You got the first one, second. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
I was just going to say that I will to work with the commissioners, I will not start them out at that rate. I'll probably start them at a lower rate for ninety days or something like that, to make sure they have their CDL license and everything else before I actually move their
Any other questions or comments from the members?
Public input?
Yeah, go ahead, come to the podium and state your name and your address.
My name is Jackie Sheets, 9409 East 1200 South. I just live outside of Matthews, and I just want to let you know that these guys did an awesome job in my area over by Matthews, they are on it. When the snow was flying, I lived right on an S curve, and not one person got caught in the snow because it was on it, so they do deserve a raise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public input? Roll call, please.
Scott.
Aye.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Roarback.
Aye.
Polling.
Yes.
Lemming.
No.
Middlesworth.
No. That's two those, correct.
It's five, it's my domain of reading count.
Five to two.
I think it's three, two, one, right? If you can't laugh at that, the motion does, the carrying is proved.
Thank you very much.
The county commissioners and their old business, Mr. Barsley, American Rescue Plan, Gas City Entertainment Center, MOU.
Happy to report that our attorneys, your attorney, their attorney have worked out the proper paperwork. We have, with the direction from our attorney, been pleased to go ahead and sign, and I would encourage you folks to take that next step for this. Again, that is an expense of up to forty-five dollars if the current amount that they have meet their needs, so I can, Mayor Rock or whoever, David Glickfield, who is their attorney, for Gas City.
Thank you, Mark. We do have the executed memorandum of understanding from everyone in Gas City and the commissioners, we're just at the point now where we need your execution, we should be good to go, so I'll answer any questions about the memorandum of understanding. Mayor Rock is here, Jason Miller's here, who is the engineer, city engineer on the project, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is there any questions from the members? You should have received that, MOU in your packet. And Phil, do you have anything you'd like to add to the...
No, I don't.
If there's no questions or comments, I entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Gas City Redevelopment Commission, City of Gas City, the Grant County, Indiana Board of County Commissioners, and the Grant County, Indiana County Council.
Can I make a motion to approve that, MOA?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Scott, to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Gas City Redevelopment Commission, the City of Gas City, Indiana, Grant County, Indiana Board of County Commissioners, and the Grant County, Indiana County Council. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input?
I need to correct my motion, it's MOU, not MOA. I think he played Aquaman.
Public input? Roll call, please.
Scott.
Aye.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Roarback.
Aye.
Polling.
Yes.
Lemming.
Aye.
Middlesworth.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, would you like me to leave this for your signature?
I, yes, I think I have one as well.
You do, I gave you one.
Yeah, I have a copy to sign as well.
Perfect. May I add one additional comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, we're going to ask for a second.
Do you, are you wanting a copy in hand this evening?
Yeah, I've got one that is the original, if you want to sign that real quick.
That's fine, you got the original.
Yeah. From the approach.
Mark's on the table, so, here, go ahead, start your signing.
I think it's just for you.
Oh, it's just for you?
It's going to fill the draft today. Paper for now, I think.
We got less than liability for the rest of us.
I can sign. Pay with Bitcoin.
Mr. President, just as a follow-up.
This is a March, what?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Yes. Out of the twelve-point-seven million dollars, it has been the intention of, not only of the council, but the commissioners to use ten million dollars that the Senate acted, enacted, we can use up to ten million dollars in loss recovery, so we will memorialize that, as well as this two-point-five, up to two-point-five with the remaining balance. You remember that we do have to approve a spending plan, and so we will target and say that ten million dollars is for loss recovery, up to two-point-five for Gas City, and the balance, undetermined at this time. We can make that a living document, we continue to add to it as we spend, but we can designate approximately twelve-point-five million dollars out of that twelve-point-seven at this time, so that will be coming across your desk next month as well.
Any other questions or comments?
Can I give you one comment, it's unrelated, based on a conversation earlier about the buildings. If anyone has any questions about the history of what's happened, we've got some insight on that, since I've been involved, well, I was involved with it back in the middle of the nineties, and there's been a lot of interesting stuff that happened, and if anyone wants some history of why some of this has happened, where we are, I'll be happy to share that with you. I'm a little bored with it now, but...
We'll be looking for a book to come out, maybe?
It would be very interesting reading. But anyway, just contact me at my office, I'll be happy to help any of you guys, if you've got any questions, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, guys.
Are there any, go ahead, somebody?
I want to thank you guys, and I think the last meeting, I was here, Mark had asked about how we're going to run that. We are going to form a board. There will be council members, redevelopment commissioners, therefore, we can dictate how to choose, and that's who's going to run it. We're also going to use it as an emergency center, I talked to Bob Jackson, so if there's something that a county that goes wrong, people from the county could come there, stay warm, have a place to stay, and we'll make sure they got food. So there's several things just going to be used for, other than just performance arts and entertainment, which is the main thing, but I want to thank each and every one of you there, and whatever we need to do to get the county building into the Gas City County seat, let me know, and we'll work on that, okay? And thanks again, guys.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor.
I knew that's where that was going.
Mayor, would you be willing to relocate your offices if that happened? Ask your front friends.
We could try to give maybe some grants or whatever.
He can find some space for you. Any committee reports? Our next regular meeting is Wednesday, April the twentieth, and we will have an executive session. Obviously, this room behind us is full, so I guess we'll plan on having it in here, and it'll just be, you know, closed-door executive session. So, meeting adjourned.